We just thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the freedoms we appreciate here in the United States of America and living in the great state of Georgia and here in Hart County. Lord, we just thank you for our community and we just thank you for all these people that have shown up tonight and voiced their concerns on one way or the other. And, Lord, may we be in a world where we're kinder to each other, even though we have different opinions. Lord, help us to be a kind person and to reach out to the other sides in cases that we need to. Lord, we just pray for our emergency services. We pray for our law enforcement, our fire protection EMS services. We just pray that you always protect these guys and be with our guys that are fighting for our freedoms across the ocean and here the ones in our homeland. Lord, we just pray that you be with these guys and help us go with us through this meeting and help us make the best decisions for the people of Hart County. And then I will pray. Amen.
This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask it, everyone, if you could remove your hats, please. First thing tonight, there'll be a call to order, Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, Hart County Board of Commissioners meeting, and at this time I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. We have a short agenda, but some items we'll spend some time on. And the first item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda or any changes.
No changes.
I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Carter and a second by Commissioner Teasley that we approve the agenda as printed. Any more discussion? Public comment on the agenda? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. You've got the February 11th, 2020, meeting minutes in your packet. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the 10/11/20 regular meeting minutes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Carter, any more discussion? Public comment on the minutes? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is remarks by committees, invited guests and authorities. We don't have anyone. Item eight, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Kim, you're on. Okay. Item nine, county administrators' report.
Just one thing, we've got the meeting with DOT tomorrow, 10:30. Just as a reminder. That's all I have.
Who else going to that? We gonna have a quorum there?
I won't be able to make it.
You gonna be?
I'll be out of town.
All right. I'm planning on going, so me and Marshall, just as a courtesy, I want to make sure the press was notified that we were going. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Chairman's report, in addition to the DOT meeting, we will have to have, the Red Creek General Store has appealed their denial, so we will have to have a hearing.
That's correct. I sent all the paperwork to Walter and Wade and Walter to get back with me when we need to schedule it.
So I would say, everybody just needs to keep their calendars open so we can find out when it's gonna be, but we will have to have that hearing. Try to tie it into a regular meeting night if we can.
Okay.
That's all I have on the chairman's report, commissioners' report, District Two.
Hey, Terrell, I'm gonna ask you something. While Jim was in here on the Vietnam Memorial on the courthouse grounds, I know we talked about, you know, changing the shrubbery out and stuff like that, and it's coming up on March, is that still a go to do that?
As soon as it went raining.
I appreciate that, that's all I got.
District Three?
Yeah, I had some questions as far as some of our roads have been torn up by the storm and everything. I can guarantee you our road departments are working as fast as they can, as quick as they can, and those roads will be open as soon as we can have some good weather to work with is one thing, but if, Terrell, if you want to expand on some of that?
We've got everything passable except the one pipe on Deer Run Lane, and we found another small pipe on a small road off Elton Highway, I can't remember the name right now, but they may have fixed that one today, I'm not sure. Otherwise, all roads are except flat shoals. Now, we're gonna do some extra work on flat shoals. If one lane you can get through, I wouldn't recommend you go through there, but we've seen a lot of traffic go through there. We're trying to get some ideas what's the best way to fix that situation.
But I would like to say I appreciate the effort of our road department in repairing these. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District Four?
I don't have nothing this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on into the business part of the agenda, the first item of business tonight will be item 12A under Old Business, bid opening for netting replacement at the new recreation park baseball fields.
We received three bids.
For those of you who are new tonight, we open all our bids in our regular meetings on TV so everybody can see what's going on. Have a bid from Networks for $15,800, and they list all the references, they list the positions as far as everything appears to be in order.
I got a bid from Collins Company, $19,800, Terrell.
I hate to even read this. It's from Bliss Products.
What was the name?
Bliss. That's $34,500, $155,000, $25,000.
I make a motion, we turn these over to the county administrator and rec department to make a recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Teasley to turn these bids over to the county administrator and recreation department for review. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12B, board appointments for Hart County Water and Sewer Authority. We have two open positions, and the only people who applied were the two applicants, Mr. Wade Carlton and Mr. Larry Haley. Can I get a motion that we reappoint these gentlemen to a new term?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer, any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12C, homestead exemption discussion. I think there's probably a lot of people here for that tonight. Before we get started into that, back in December, Franklin County Tax Commissioner Bobby Martin went to the Franklin County Board of Commissioners about increasing the homestead exemption, and Alan Powell was contacted, and Representative Powell and myself had several discussions about this. Put together a presentation that we want to walk through to kind of explain where we're at, our situation, and leave it open for some questions if somebody's got anything. That one's skewed, so bear with me. First thing I want to talk about is the different current homestead exemptions we've got.
Wait, do you want to get up there?
I have to. Just bear with me. You can see here in this slide, you've got the different levels. You've got the L1, L3, and S1, S5, S8, and S9. The L series are locals. The S is a state level. So, for example, an L1 homestead exemption is for $10,000 off the assessed value, and you have to be 65 or older to qualify for that. S1 is a $2,000 off the assessed value for all homeowners in their primary home. Notice there's 2,824 that we have in the county. And go back to L1, you're 65 and older, 2,254. So there's a big difference there. The L3, this is an income-based and age-based homestead exemption. There's only one of those in the county. And then you've got your S5, S8, and S9. S5 is 100% for disabled veterans, up to $90,364 off their assessed value. There's 80 of those, and then there's S8, there's two, and S9, those are very similar. So I wanted to talk about that, so we can kind of see the position that we're in. When we start talking about a homestead exemption and changing it, basically what we're doing is shifting the tax burden. And I want to go into the millage rates because these play a key in determining that amount. The current Board of Commissioners' millage rate is 5.89. We also have a 0.5 mil add-on for EMS, and then the Board of Education is 13.156. So when you look at the split up of the property taxes that you pay based off the millage, 30% or so goes to the Board of Commissioners, the other 70% goes to the school board. And that brings us to, let's start looking at where we're at and where can we go, what can we do based on our current economic climate, things that we know that are gonna be coming up, and where we're at today. The first thing I want to talk about is the possibility of adding an additional $5,000 homestead exemption for those 65 and older. This board can only pass a resolution to make a change. Our state representative would introduce legislation in Atlanta that would go through the system out there while the current legislature is in session, and then it would be put before the voters in November for approval or disapproval. So when you look at our L1 homestead exemptions, we had 2,254. If we use $5,000 as the incremental value, right now, everybody that's 65 and older is eligible for $12,000. That's the 2,000 state and the $10,000 local. If we add an additional $5,000 to that, based on our millage rate, it's 6.39. That's the 5.89 plus the half mil for EMS. This is the BOC portion only. Qualifying taxpayers would save $31.95 per year incremental. I know that's not a lot, but when you start looking at the number of taxpayers, it does add up. And the Board of Commissioners, we only control 30% of that total tax bill that you have. So what happens if the Board of Education joins in and does this as well? They will have to do this themselves. This board cannot pass a resolution on behalf of the Board of Education. So when we pull all of that in with the $5,000 homestead exemption increase, 2,254 current homesteads at 65 and older, and a total millage rate of 19.546, it goes up to $97.73 per homestead per year. So there's some incremental savings. So there's our $5,000 one. Let's look at our $10,000 one. Basically, everything's the same except the number's double. So for your $10,000 homestead exemption, for the Board of Commissioners' part, it would actually be $63.90 versus $31.95 as it was on the 5,000. Your Board of Commissioners and Board of Ed, which would be your second level at the bottom, would be a total of $195.46. That's if both boards did a $10,000 increase to the homestead exemption. That's if both boards. Again, we can only comment on the Board of Commissioners. Now, here's our current economic climate, and this is something that we really need to take into consideration. I want to make sure this goes up. We are facing two plant closures this year, Tenneco and Newton Mill. When we look at the inventory and the equipment, which is the stuff that will primarily be extracted out of those facilities, the total impact is about $340,000. That's for both the school board and the Board of Commissioners. So if you take a third of that, the Board of Commissioners is looking at about $133,000 That will start next year. Okay? So we also have another, what I'm gonna call a bad guy, or if you were looking at this from a business standpoint as far as a profit and loss statement, our jail mills, we budgeted $7.80, I think was what we budgeted, and we're at 9.35. So there's a $1.55 increase per inmate per day. So if you figure that, $1.55 times 55 inmates times 365 days per year, it's $31,116.25. Inmate housing, we know that's gonna be a wild card. It just depends on how well people behave. We do have inmates, our jails full, we're over a little bit, but we're not over to the point where we were three years ago, where we were gonna go somewhere over $300,000 in inmate housing. We don't know what that's gonna be. It just depends on how the court system goes, probation, there's a lot of factors there. Then there's some incremental expenses with the new voting machines. We don't really know what that's gonna cost. And then there's the significant risk at the state level right now with the revenue situation and getting a budget balanced with all the uncertainties there. I feel sure there're gonna be quite a few unfunded mandates coming out of the Golden Dawn that the counties and cities are gonna have to pick up. Don't know what those are, but I would be very surprised if there's not some. So as far as the next steps, the Board of Commissioners, as I said earlier, we can only speak for ourselves. I think it would be in our best interest to have a joint meeting to review this with the BOE. I think everybody on the Board of Commissioners is committed to trying to do something. I feel like, looking at the numbers right now, we can only commit to a $5,000 increase. And I wanted everybody to see the reasons why, what we're facing. We would look very silly if we went and did a larger increase and then turned around and raised the millage rate. That would look, would look like a bunch of clowns, like we didn't know what we were doing. But, that being said, we have until March 11th to get a resolution approved to Representative Powell, to get it through the legislature so we can go on the ballot in November. That's where we stand, and my recommendation is that we do the 5,000. I feel like we can handle that. It would be a year delayed. If it was voted on in November, this would not take effect until 2022, I believe, if I'm right. And if things change, so be it. We're conservative on our finances, and keep in mind, this is something that if we go and increase that 5,000 to something higher and then have to do a millage rate increase, it's taking it all away. So this is really a mute point. And I know people probably would like to see more, but, you know, we've looked at this hard over the last few weeks, and with the uncertainties and things going on with the economy, if the economy stays strong, this may be something we can come back and look at and revisit in a few years down the road. But with that being said, I'm gonna open it up to the board. If any of the commissioners have any questions, concerns, or want to say anything, or talk about the presentation, I'll open it up to you guys.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I feel for the elderly people of this county. I mean, I realize there's a lot that, a lot of people that are on fixed incomes and the price of pharmaceuticals these days and all these things that, you know, we don't live in a perfect world, but I am concerned, but like I said, I don't want to walk into something that I'm gonna have to walk back out of. I want to know where we at so that we can be confident in the decision that we make.
I agree with Commissioner Sayer. You know, I know it'd be nice to do this, if there's any way that we can do it, and I'd be in support of it, if we, any way that we can do to make it happen. I'm gonna say to what old Ross Peru used to say, "Measure it twice and cut it once. Get it right the first time." So we, there was like our next meeting in March would be when we'd have to approve it.
Approve a resolution?
For the resolution.
I mean, we could go ahead and vote on it tonight if we wanted to commit to the 5,000. I think everybody's on that page now, anyway. But we wanted to be able to explain tonight why we can't do 10,000. That number's been tossed around, neighboring counties are looking at it, but we wanted people to be able to see the math and see where we were and the situation that we're being dealt. Anybody from the public would like to come and address us?
Well, this is my first one of these.
If you'll come to the podium, please?
Oh, okay.
That way, everybody at home can see what's been said.
Well, this is my first one of these, so I didn't even know if we could ask questions.
Sure.
My only question was, when you put up the statistics on Tenneco and the Newton Mills closing and that financial impact, I was just curious, we've got all those new plants being built up by I-85 and stuff like that, is there any positive revenue impact that's being factored into that?
There will be, but they're phased in, they're not at 100%. So it's, you know, 10%, 20%. One is completely phased in in TI Automotive, but you've got like Purina, they're just beginning their phase-in period. So, and we have to give tax incentives to get these industries to locate here, otherwise we wouldn't have what we've got. But that's the situation that we have, and we're a very transparent board. We don't have anything to hide. All our meetings are out in the open. You know, they're on YouTube. As this meeting is tonight, after you leave, you can go to YouTube and pull up Hart County Board of Commissioners, and you can go back and watch this meeting. You can watch it live if you're at home tonight.
Okay.
But that's the situation that we're up against.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And one other thing I didn't quantify in there is, and I think we all know, health care is a wild card for health insurance, and we've been fortunate the last few years to not see any major increases. Anybody else from the public like to address the board? Mr. Fogarty?
Bill Fogarty here with the Hart County Property Owners Association and two or three other organizations, too. First of all, I'd like to compliment you all for taking this step. I had talked to a number of you earlier in the week, and one gentleman said, "Well, what do you think about what we're talking about doing?" And I said, "I think this is the right direction to go. Yeah, we'd love to have 100%, we'd love to have 10,000. I think a five is reasonable, and you all are comfortable with it. We ought to be comfortable with it." You've certainly always been realistic with numbers. I would point out, however, that the seniors are the biggest demographic in Hart County, and in many ways, don't take as much use of even the county resources, certainly not the school resources, but the county resources. Recreation, for instance, pretty much limited to what we can do in the two rec buildings there on the, you know, in the old campus. But the point being is that anything you can do to help is a plus, and I think that's why there's so many of us out here tonight. One thing I would point out, though, when you talk long-term, and I know some of the real estate people look at this, the homestead exemption or the increases in homestead exemptions can be an extra carrot to bring people to Hart County. If then, in fact, there are retirees coming in or will be very shortly, the extra money, even though as we're talking about it's $31, not, you know, hundreds of dollars, can have an effect. So I think there's a positive side of it, too. But we thank you for taking a look at it. We appreciate it, also that Alan Powell, I guess, kind of started pushing the ball and will be with you and call us if we can help. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Bill. Thank you. Anybody else from the public, Mr. Buckles?
Mike Buckle here. I urge you to go for the $10,000 exemption. The county's full of seniors, we're all on fixed income, and every day inflation chips away at our income. Every day, it chips away. And sooner or later, we're gonna run out of our 401K, and then, I don't know where we'll do, maybe we'll shoot ourselves. But, you know, this thing takes two years to go into effect, so all the new businesses up on 85, they're gonna have another 20% increase in their taxes because they'll be here another two years. So I urge you to do the 10 grand, and if you have to raise the millage, that spreads over the whole county. That's just not focused on us folks. So a millage spread over the whole county is not near as painful as paying full-up retail for us guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, we're not gonna approve the resolution tonight, but I think everybody knows where the board is headed. I lost my train of thought.
Plus, the meeting with the Board of Education may be contingent on what we want to do also.
And, you know, just to address Mr. Buckles' situation, we got some other long-term, high-dollar projects that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to build a jail. We all know we're gonna have to build a jail. We're looking at $14,000, $15,000 million. One of the things we did with the last sploshed is we shifted some things around on the public safety side so that we would have cash flow to start working with architects, whatever the case may be, so that we could get the process started, because we're gonna have to come back to the voters if, when, if and when we do a jail for bonded indebtedness approval. That day's coming, and every day that passes is getting a day closer. There's a lot of unforeseen issues out there that could very easily, we have one or two catastrophic health claims, we could be looking at a 40% increase in our health insurance. This board is conservative, and I don't think, in the grand scheme of things, I don't think we're in a position to go and gamble with the taxpayers' money, and that's why we all feel at this point in time, certain we can make 5,000 happen. And I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just wanting to put the whole picture out there. That was the purpose of showing some of the information that we've shown tonight, so. But I think you can go to the bank on the commitment, this board is gonna vote to increase it at least 5,000. So, with that being said, anybody else want, anything?
If we vote to increase it 5,000, will that have an effect on the Board of Education also?
The Board of Education is totally separate.
It's just our side.
Just our side. If the Board of Education goes and does the same thing we do, I think it's like a $91 savings.
It'd be about $200.
$97.
One day from when it'd be $200 together.
If you went to 10,000, it'd be about $200 for both combined, so.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. What's the total impact, tax impact on the county if you go to buy for one year of the overall?
Sid, would you tell him a change?
Let's see. Yeah, $72,015.30. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, item 13A, Hart Franklin Airport Authority revolving loan fund request. The Hart Franklin Airport Authority has been in contact with the industrial building authority. The IBA has about $37,000 in its RLF fund, and there's an agreement out there to loan the Hart Franklin Airport Authority $36,000 of that, with the terms being a 10-year note at 3% interest. And I don't know if we got the resolution. You got anything?
I do not have it.
Okay. Could we go ahead and, can I get a motion that we go ahead and approve this?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. So we'll have that one taken care of.
And 36 was your number?
36,000, 10 years at 3%. For those of you who are here, I'll tell you why this airport is a big deal to Hart County. We're constantly bringing in clients from an economic development standpoint. If we, 20 years ago, we had to land them in Anderson or in Greenville. They saw South Carolina at our expense. Now, with this Hart Franklin Airport, we can bring in these jets. They come in, they see Hart County and Franklin County. They don't see everybody else at our expense, so it works out really well, it's very convenient. So the Airport Authority is a huge asset to us from an economic development standpoint, so.
And just as a note, why your resolution wasn't here, Walter had a situation he had to leave for, he's got the resolution with him.
Okay. We've approved it, so I can sign it. Next item on the agenda is item 13B, 2020 Recreation Little League Baseball Agreement. This is a standard- This is a standard agreement that we do each year with both Hart County Little League and Barnes Academy. You've got copies of the agreements in your meeting packet, the advisory board has also taken a look at this and voted to approve.
I make a motion to approve, we'll go ahead and do both of them, Little League and Barnes Academy agreements.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayre, and a second by Commissioner Teasley to take both Barnes Academy and Hart County Little League agreements together. Any more discussion?
I got a question.
Yeah, I put the wrong minute, see?
That wasn't it. I already done talking about that. The terms of space use agreement begin on February 1st, 2020.
Correct, I didn't put the current date on it, we'll change the current date to the date.
Okay. We were supposed to have had this earlier, but the advisory board at their last meeting did not have a quorum, is my understanding.
Correct.
So therefore, we didn't get it.
Correct, yeah, it was delayed because of lack of quorum, should've been approved their last meeting last month.
Fortunately, it hasn't resulted in any issues, but. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sayre, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment on this issue? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. That concludes the old and new business part of the agenda tonight. We'll move into public comment, if you would like to come and address the board, if you will raise your hand and be recognized, and then come to, I'll ask you to come to the podium. Yes, sir, come to the podium. If you could state your name.
Sure, my name's Tom Dancy.
And five minutes.
Five minutes.
There's probably others that won't speak, so I gotta...
I'll make it brief and to the point. So, you know, I've lived in Hart County about 20 years, and retired recently, and that was the plan, to come up here and work my last 18 years or so, and then retire, and brought our kids up here, they went to school here and everything, I really do enjoy Hart County, it's been a blessing to me in a lot of ways to move up here. About, I guess, a year or two ago, the house right next to me was sold, and then was used as Airbnb, which I think in a lot of ways is great, but it did create some issues for us at the house, and, you know, I thought about it, and, you know, how do we handle this? And then the house was sold, the Airbnb went away, and someone moved in full-time, so I was happy as I could be. So, it kind of went to the back burner in my life. And then I read an article in the newspaper, the Hartwell Sun, probably three or four weeks ago, I can't remember exactly, and it referred to House Bill...
523.
523. And basically, what it was is, the House Representatives, and I imagine eventually the Senate, is going to try and pass a law basically stating that local municipalities, be they city or county, will be unable to pass any ordinances governing short-term rentals. And any ordinances that were passed on rentals would have to treat all residents in the county exactly the same. So, if in the future, if Hart County wanted to pass any ordinances governing short-term rentals, they would be unable to. The bill also states that if those ordinances are already in place, they could stay in place. So, places like Atlanta, they already have ordinances governing Airbnbs and VRBOs, short-term rentals, and Green County has those ordinances. I know the city of Lawrenceville is looking at them seriously right now. So, that kind of prompted me to action, is if I sat back and didn't express my concerns a year from now, or two years from now, we wouldn't be able to regulate these types of rentals at all in the county. So, also, I want to state that I'm not against Airbnbs and short-term rentals, there are benefits for the county, and we talk about that, especially the county we live in, which is kind of a vacation spot for some people, right? So, it increases our sale tax revenue, because when they come up, they go to Walmart, and they buy a kayak, they go down to Depot Street, and they eat lunch or dinner, and they hit the new brewery there and everything, so there's a lot of benefit there, right? And as these businesses get more business, they employ more people. I think in a real general sense, it probably elevates the real estate values, right? Unless one happens to be next to you, and it may bring your value down, but overall, I think for the county. So, in a lot of ways, I think it's important for Hart County to welcome this type of revenue stream, but by the same token, we need to seriously consider what of our liabilities when we let that happen? How does it affect our quality of life? So, I'm not up here saying that I have solutions, I don't know what the solution is, my most important reason for coming to this meeting is that raise the awareness level with everybody that this is happening in Atlanta, the state capital, and if we want to impact it at all, the time to move is now, the next 12 or 24 months, okay? So, there are drawbacks to having Airbnbs in your neighborhood, and one is, I know a lot of these lake houses are built, and then they add rooms on in the basement and everything, and I get concerned, and they bring their kids up, and I truly am concerned about this, is safety for the people who are staying. When I go to New Orleans, or Atlanta, or Miami, and I rent a hotel room, I know there's gonna be adequate fire escapes, I know there's gonna be fire extinguishers, right? I know that I'm not allowed to put 14 people in my two-bed hotel room, because they have occupational limitations. And I think it's incumbent upon us, for the safety of our guests, that we should consider imposing some type of safety restrictions on these houses that are rented. I mean, I've been in houses on the lake where they have two bedrooms in the basement, and they don't have any windows, there's one exit, so you stick four little kids in that bedroom, and the house catches on fire, there's no exit for those children. So, I think it's incumbent upon the county to stress to the people who are renting, that, you know, if you're gonna rent your house out, there's gotta be some safety standards, all right? Also, this is another thing, we're talking about taxes, and we're talking about lowering, you know, giving some more tax breaks to people who are 65 or older, and I'm very excited about that, to be quite honest. But, you know, when I, and I traveled for a living before I retired, and I would go into a hotel room in Dallas or San Francisco, and I would pay local sales tax, I would pay safe sales tax, I would pay a hospitality tax, and that revenue would go back to the county, right? So, if you have a house that's vacant, you know, I have neighbors that are weekend-only, and they're there 10 weekends a year, the rest of the time, the house is empty. But when they do the VRBOs, they do the short-term rentals, the one that was next to me, it was occupied probably 80% of the weekends. So, there's more occupancy in that structure, there's gonna be more need for services, whether it be fire, ambulances, police, traffic on the roads, I don't know what there is, but when you boost that up, there's a cost. And I don't understand, and I think you guys are working on it, why we are not collecting sales tax on these people that are renting out these houses, they're basically commercial properties right now, right? I think if there's any real estate agents in the room, they probably want to throw something at you right now, because every time I try and sell a house, I get... And you can set it up as a short-term rental, make revenue stream on it, which I think you should be able to do if you own the property. But you need to be responsible for the impact you're bringing to our community by renting the short-term rental. It has an impact on the quality of life, all right? Another issue we had is, and this is the thing that really upset me, is I had guests at my house, and they went to walk their dog, and the dog at the short-term rental place was not on a leash, came out and attacked my guest's dog and put it in the vet, had to get a couple hundred stitches and stuff. And we have a leash law in Hart County. But when someone comes in from out of town, and they live in a big city, and all of a sudden, they're on three-fourths by acre, they think they're in the bottom of the Grand Canyon, and their dog can run free, so maybe there should be speculations that if you're going to rent your place out, maybe even in the contract, maybe some of our important local ordinances, maybe the drinking age, maybe, you know, the noise level, maybe indecent exposure, because I've had people on the dock of my house urinating, and I'm sitting on my back porch with my friends, and these houses basically are party houses, it's like living next door to a fraternity house, right? And I've gone to fraternity houses in my life, but, you know, there's gotta be some way to educate the people coming in as to, you know, these are the limits, you can't do all this type of stuff.
I keep starting to wrap it up.
Okay, I wanna wrap it up right now. And one more thing I'm concerned about is, when someone's renting their property out to somebody, they have financial liabilities, and they ought to be required to carry some type of commercial insurance, so if someone gets hurt in their house, it's one thing if you have a guest, and they hurt in your house, your homeowner's insurance covers it, but if you're renting the place out, you know, the insurance company may cover it the first time or the second time, but eventually, they're gonna edit everybody's insurance policy and say, "Hey, we're gonna charge you more," or, you know, no liability if you're renting your place out. So, I don't know what the solution is, but I think it's something we need to bring up, and we need to discuss, and go in the right direction. I don't know what the average person's impression is, and I may be swimming upstream here, but I think it's something we need to consider. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Would you like to speak?
No. Anybody else for public comment? Well, he's coming up, the county does get 5% tax on these that we know about, we've got a staff member that's constantly looking for these, that works for TERRILL, so there is some limited tax revenue for the county, it's not a lot, but there is some. Yes, sir, if you'll state your name.
Yes, I'm Wallace Rowland.
And if you'd address comments to the board, please.
Yes, yes, okay. We've spoken, I believe, to every one of you guys on the phone, except maybe you, Ricky, but I've emailed with all of you guys, and it was after Mr. Dancy made me aware of this House Bill 523. So, I'm up here for two reasons, one, to urge you to vote against that bill, and to help us help Alan Powell understand the ramifications of this bill. Because I had a conversation with Alan Powell before I knew he was a co-sponsor of that bill, and his concern was property rights, as Mr. Dancy's discussed, but I told him there's also a responsibility that come with those rights, when you turn that home into a business in somebody's neighborhood, and you have a detrimental effect on the people living in that neighborhood. He has a personal experience very shocking. We know probably half a dozen other couples and families on this lake, and we've only lived here permanently six months. We bought our place as a weekend place three years ago, and then, a year and a half, two years ago, a VRBO popped up next to us. The owner sold it, didn't know he was selling it to someone that was gonna turn it into a VRBO, and we've been living that nightmare every weekend, revolving door of people. So, again, there's property rights, then there's responsibilities that go with rights when it comes to turning that place into a business. So, one of the things that I thought we were gonna discuss here, but maybe at a future time, is developing some ordinances and some common sense approaches to regulating these places, and, you know, making sure that they have a less detrimental effect on the neighborhood, as Mr. Dancy pointed out, safety issues, that sort of thing. So, that was what I wanted to bring up here. You know, I said, I know we've talked about it a number of times, phone, emails, and so forth. So, we're pretty passionate about it, because we've been personally detrimentally impacted by it. 100% of the people we've interviewed would not want one next door to their home, particularly their retirement home, and where they plan to spend the rest of their lives, they don't want one next to them, particularly when it's on the lake, because there's a lot of things that go on that are even beyond the scope of what the people put in the rental, the cautions and so forth, they're regularly exceeded, head counts, occupancy, noise, that sort of thing. So, again, would appreciate your support for voicing opposition against 523, and then, whatever we can do to come up with some ordinances on these businesses. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for me?
I got just a general statement. Our association mechanic commissioner, Georgia ACCG, is in strict opposition of this bill. So, they're pushing against it. But also, when we're talking about looking at tax revenue, according to what ACCG's talking points is, it prohibits local governments, wait a minute, let me back up. Oh, yeah, it prohibits local governments from adopting any mechanism to register or track short-term rental properties, so that would basically prevent you from going out here and trying to find out which homes should be paying this tax, that's the way I understand it. So, you know, if this law passes, then you're gonna pretty much be out of tax revenue on that.
Well, I think we don't track it that way, we look for the advertisements, and then go from that standpoint, based off what I've seen. But, I mean, I know the House Bill 523 says that you can't track it, I do agree with you there. Let him finish, please.
The one thing we've done in the past is created a resolution to send to our representatives in opposition or in support of certain bills, so we could do that if the board sees fit to do that, I can't make that decision for all of them. ACCG's pushing it pretty hard, so I don't know if that'd be enough or not, sometimes ACCG pushes something, and it still goes through. But they say the same thing, y'all are saying party have, a lot of party have, and if this goes into, law goes into effect, it pretty much shot the cannon in the foot, you can't do nothing, you're just toast out of it. We're not real big on regulation in this county anyhow, but, you know, one thing, presents a problem, we need to be able to address that problem, and if this law won't allow us to do it at all.
I know the letter that I got from EU, I forwarded it on to State Representative Alan Powell, and I never did get an email from you, Tom.
I wrote one out to him, and he had to respond.
Have to come back up here. No, I mean, if he's gonna speak, well, everybody can hear, and it's, you know, you can't hear it at home, somebody's sitting down, so. Anybody else have anything? I've spoken to Representative Powell as well on this issue, and I somewhat agree with him that it is a private property right and an issue. There are ordinances in place for some of the things, we have a leash law, that you've got to have the animal contained on your property. I know there's a lot of, the Sheriff's Department, bless their hearts, are constantly chasing dogs, it seems like. So, that's one of the things that we do have ordinances in place for. There are other things that, quite frankly, I don't know that you could even do an ordinance for, if you didn't do it, how do you enforce it? There's a lot of vague things out there, what's acceptable to one might not be acceptable to another. I don't agree with what's being done with House Bill 523, I think that the control needs to stay local. But, that's just my thoughts. Anybody else?
I've also spoken with Representative Powell, and, you know, the part, one of the major parts of the bill that I had a problem with, when it characterizes short-term rental, long-term rental, and non-rentals, all in one group, that's a problem there for me, because that, again, takes away any kind of ordinances that you could do to short-term rentals. But, from the word I got, that it probably won't go through this year, so that may can give us a little time to, as far as noise ordinance, I find it difficult to, this is a big, pretty big county with the law enforcement that we have, I mean, and when you're gonna make a case with a noise ordinance, you gotta have a decibel reader and all these things, and by the time the deputy runs out there, and then they done cut the noise down, so we've taken up a deputy checking on noise where he may be needed somewhere else, you know, and that sort of thing, so that's kind of difficult. The occupancy ordinance, say if you had a home that was, the occupancy was for eight people, well, probably most of the time you're having a problem is in the daytime, when you're outside or whatever, and these eight people have the right to have visitors over, and who's gonna be able to determine who the eight are supposed to be there? And who's going to be able to determine who the eight are supposed to be there? There's a lot of difficulties in trying to regulate something like that, but I, I do understand the problem. And we would, we will be thinking about it. Like I said, I, I oppose the, the House bill also for the simple reason of putting all of those types of housing in together. I mean, that's, that's difficult for me. Chairman?
Yes, one more time.
Yeah, thank you. Dylan, thank you again. Wallace Rowland here. You mentioned we do have ordinances on the books. Maybe one thing is to be aware and make these business owners aware of what the ordinances are on the books, and at least admonish them to ensure that their renters, guests, whatever you want to call these people, are aware of them as well. They may not obey them, but at least everybody knows what we have on the books, leash laws, occupancy laws, taxation, noise ordinances. So, and we may have others that I'm not aware of. We had talked about trying to come up with some ideas, but what we have on the books now, let's at least make sure that these business owners are aware of them and further that they make their guests aware of them as well.
Would that be something that we would put out to like the real estate folks or whatever? I don't even know who rents these, who has these places for rent. I'm sure there's a long list of them, I don't know.
I think a lot of it's done on internet, pretty much. I will say this much, that normal residences and commercial residences have different codes. Multi-family houses have different code. But all codes require an egress, ingress window or some kind of opening inside a home, basement level, whatever level. And that egress and ingress is, the fire department has to get in there also. So it's got to be big enough for somebody like me to get into, a full turnout, you're on a pretty good sized home.
Yes, sir, last time.
There may be somebody else who wants to speak. I mean, normally, we just let people speak one time.
While, while you're coming up here, that's a state code. So they're supposed to follow state code, whether we got an inspector or not.
So first, for main reason, again, Tom Dancy, main reason I came was to make sure everybody's aware that the state's trying to limit our ability to pass legislation locally to control this stuff. And, and if they do it, you said chances are they probably won't, but eventually they may, then we have no, we have no decision in the process at all. Whatever it is, whatever the state wants to do, if we want to regulate it at all, we're going to have to get a state passed down in Georgia, down in Atlanta, and that's going to be very difficult. One of the things I, I failed to mention is, you know, maybe now we could just pass an ordinance that if they're going to do short-term rentals, rentals under thirty-one days, they have to register with the county. Just so we know that they're doing it.
They already do.
So are there people registering? Okay, all right. And the, the other thing is, is on occupancy, you know, so my experience is, the house that was next to me was two very small bedrooms and a loft. And they listed it for like twelve people. I guess they can get twelve people in there, right? I've slept on couches before. But, you know, when they, those, they come in, it's, it's a younger set, they're on the lake, they bring their ski boats and stuff, and they invite all their friends up to the lake, which I think is fantastic. They all come up and spend money. But we live on a little private road, there's four houses on it. And they, they've got, you know, they've got nine cars. And they're, the driveway, they're in, they're on our private road, they're parked all over the place. And that's fine, I think they should come up and let you have the fun. But they don't need seventeen people sleeping in that two-bedroom apartment overnight. I mean, there's got to be some regulation there, right? So they can stay till one in the morning, but then they've got to go. I, I don't, I don't, again, I don't know what the solution is, but the solution is, is not let the state of Georgia figure out the solution and let us sit here and have no input. I'm done. Don't raise my hand again, I promise. Thank you.
There've been two, there've been two legislative committees or state committees, one twenty-fifteen, one twenty-eighteen, and both of them recognize a complexity of the topic and differing local circumstances. I mean, the committee that studied these things has already determined that probably ought to leave it like it is. And that's my opinion.
Well, the, a lot of times you learn about, a lot about a bill is where, why did it originate, you know? And I found out that there were a lot of municipalities and counties that were denying short-term rentals at all. You know, and that's, that's why this bill got started. And I don't think anyone here is against having short-term rentals. I mean, I, I think it's, we're all for the economy of this county, and it benefits the county, so. But we will look at it and we will see what we can do.
If you read this thing, it, it looks like they're just taking them right out and trying to protect that little organization all by itself.
Well, I mean, it goes back to, and I see where Representative Powell's coming from with private property rights. You're trying to tell somebody what they can and can't do with their pro, with their property. This county has no zoning for that reason, because we don't feel like it's right for the government to infringe on what you can and cannot do with your property. You pay taxes on it, as long as you're not causing a problem, we're not getting involved in it. To start getting these onesie-twosie ordinances, we don't have the resources to go out and, and enforce these. Again, we would be foolish to go and pass an ordinance and not have the mechanism to enforce it. So there's got to be a common sense approach here. And in, in these situations, if there's a problem, call law enforcement. That's what they're there for. And then, you know, I hate to, I hate to, hate to put the burden off on them, but they're the enforcement side of things. There are estate laws out there for disturbing the peace, things of that nature. There's a county ordinance for that. As a matter of fact, we just revised that at the request of the sheriff and the magistrate judge just, what, January, December? So to clear up some, some language in it. So there's, there's things out there. And if we were to try to do an ordinance tonight, by the time we had an ordinance pulled together, it takes three consecutive meetings, it takes six weeks to get it done. If you're looking at two months legislative session, because that'll be out first of April. But we will continue to monitor this. But I do want to make sure that everybody understands that we, we, private property rights are a big thing in this county. And, you know, people work and pay for their stuff. You know, if you want to go buy a Corvette, you know, that's your money, you do what you want to. Nobody's going to tell you what color to get or whatever, or what year model, that's your decision. But we do, we do have some concerns and we would like to have local control. So we will continue to, to monitor this and, and engage with Representative Powell. We'll be talking with him pretty regularly on this homestead exemption thing over the next couple of weeks. And that's all I'm going to say. Does anybody got anything else?
Yeah, I've got one more thing. If you go out and buy a Corvette, you can't get seventeen people in it.
You might, you might not.
This convertible, you can get three or four, I know. So, so anyway. All right, anybody else for public comment? If not, can I get a motion that we go into executive session for personnel litigation?
I like a motion to go into executive session for personnel litigation.
Motion by Commissioner Sayre, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.